Planning Commission meeting for June 17, 2021. Just a few notes about our meeting format. We have planning commissioners and staff in person as well as members of the public. Based on current health guidelines, we ask that anyone who is unvaccinated, please continue wearing a face mask. We are also broadcasting this evening for viewers on Channel 8 and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. Members of the public who are not present and wish to make comments may participate virtually by joining through Zoom either on a device or by calling in. The Zoom meeting information is provided on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. We appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting, and we hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. I'd like to call the order, the meeting, the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission meeting for June 17, 2021. May I get a roll call of the members, please?
Ari Krichiver.
Here.
Jaheen Sinbhai.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Christine Disney. Will Kearns. Janet Leo. Dan Larson.
Here.
And Melissa Antol is absent tonight.
The next order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the order of the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 20, 2021?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the minutes for May 20, 2021.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Motion passed six to zero with one abstaining.
Thank you. In our agenda, we are now at the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. You will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Speakers may not donate their time. If you plan to speak, please give us your name, spell your last name, and share your address. If you are here to comment on one of tonight's public hearing items, please wait until we get to that agenda item. Is there anyone signed to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda?
On something that's not related to your... Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and your address, please.
Hi, everyone. Frank Cefarati. Cefarati, C-E-F-A-R-A-T-T-I, address 3605 W Street. Okay, hi, thanks. I did want to speak outside of the agenda. I wanted to bring this up, and I didn't know who to go through, but I wanted to throw it out there. The property, the park that the city owns that has been fenced off, I know there was that homeless problem, and we have spoken about this past, and then I know the other restaurant that abuts to it to the west, I believe you guys have just acquired because of the road expansion. I just wanted to ask, or if someone could point me in the right direction, who to speak to about possibly helping the city develop that blighted area or soon to be blighted. I'd love to step in and help. It's not related to this agenda, however, it's right next door, so I think it could work concurrently, and just looking for some resources.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Mr. Chair, we don't have anybody else signed up to speak in person. We do have two members of the public joining us on Zoom, so I will unmute, I can allow them to speak. If you are on the Zoom and you're on the phone, you can unmute yourself by hitting star six. And then if you are on Zoom on the device and you'd like to speak on something not on the agenda, you can go ahead and raise your hand now. Not seeing any hands raised or unmuting on Zoom, so we are probably good to go.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda? Please speak up now. Seeing none, I will close the public forum. We'll move into the public hearings. Tonight, we have two public hearings. I'd like to welcome members, any members of the public. It's important that the public hearing be conducted in a dignified and civil manner. Our hope is that we create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue. We appreciate your help in the process. We start all public hearings with a presentation from staff and the applicant. After the presentations, the commission will ask questions of staff and the applicant, and then we will invite the public to comment as well during the citizens' forum. I will now open the public hearing for case number WS 2101. This is an application filed by Frank Cefarati for approval of a two-lot major subdivision with right-of-way dedication in the mixed-use commercial zone district and located at 4100 Wadsworth Boulevard. Can we, can we get the staff report, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Scott Cutler, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. This is case number WS 2101, which is a request for approval of a two-lot major subdivision with dedication of a public street located in the mixed-use commercial zone district. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. Properties within the City of Wheat Ridge and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, the planning commission has jurisdiction to hear the case. This is a 2020 aerial view of the property, and the property is outlined in red. It's just under two acres, and it's currently one lot under one single ownership. It's located on the east side of Wadsworth, just east of the Town Center Park, and it's north of the Safeway and south of the post office and Big Lots Shopping Center. The area is primarily commercial, but there is residential located to the east along Uppam Street, although there is no connection to that street. The site currently contains a single-story office building on the western half of the lot, and the eastern half is vacant. There are numerous access easements and private drives connecting the site to other properties and Wadsworth Boulevard. The subject site is zoned mixed-use commercial, as are all the properties in the surrounding area along Wadsworth. To the east on Uppam Street, properties are zoned R3 and R2 and contain a mix of residential uses with two-story multifamily on the property immediately to the east. The subdivision regulations are found in Article 4 of the zoning code. For tonight, we're looking at a plat. That's a technical document that removes, creates, or defines property lines, allows the city to evaluate the right-of-way, and allows the city to evaluate civil construction documents. Does not affect the current zoning or permitted use on the property, but it does enable development already permitted by the current zoning. The purpose of the request tonight is to create two lots. One lot would be for the existing office building and will be retained by the current owner, and the second lot is being created for future development, and a site plan is under review by staff for this site. The subdivision also dedicates the eastern 52 feet of the site as right-of-way for a public street, which is Vance Street. There is an existing access easement in the location of Vance Street, but it will be upgraded as part of the construction on the second lot. The plat also creates new utility and drainage easements and upgrades existing access easements for the fire department access across the new lot. Any new development on the site will be required to comply with the MUC development standards, and the applicant submitted site plan demonstrates that Lot 2 is developable. A multifamily use is proposed, which is permitted by the underlying zoning and is compatible with adjacent multifamily uses as well as the surrounding commercial areas. This is an excerpt from page two of the plat document, which is Exhibit 3 in the staff report. Lot 1 is on the west side, which is where the existing office building is located, and then the new Lot 2 is on the east and is the future development site. The area shown as Tract A, which is outlined in red, is where Vance Street will be dedicated. The area is already an existing paved easement, but will be upgraded to a city street with sidewalks, curb and gutter, and parallel parking. And I'll show how this section of Vance Street ties into the street network in a minute. This slide shows some of the easements dedicated by the plat, including a stormwater drainage easement in the northeast corner of Lot 2, and access easements along the southern portion of the lot, which aligns with the existing parking lot in Lot 1. There's a 30-foot access easement along the west side of Lot 1, and that's existing and won't be changing as part of this development, and that's the same for the access easement along the north side, which crosses onto the adjacent property. This is a diagram showing the network of right-of-way and access easements in the area. The area is bounded by 38th Avenue, Uppam Street, 44th Avenue, and Wadsworth, which the city considers a super block, which means that there's no public street connectivity through the area. City documents and code call for improved connectivity. So we're taking an incremental approach to improve connectivity in the area, which began with the dedication of Vance Street between 43rd and 44th Avenues and the Town Center subdivision to the north, which is shown at the top of this diagram. The proposed right-of-way dedication on the subject property aligns with Vance Street to the north and existing access easements to the north and south. The proposed dedication is also consistent with a historical cross-access easement in the same location and connects to easements onto and all sides of the property, so it allows access from this right-of-way to other public streets. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, and completed an internal review. There are no remaining comments on this application, and both planning and engineering have found the plat to be approvable. Construction documents for Lot 2, including paving, drainage, and grading, are under review by engineering, and the site plan is under review by planning. These documents are not part of the presentation this evening. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days. Letters were sent to property owners within 600 feet, and comments were collected on Wheat Ridge Speaks. Ultimately, staff has concluded that the request meets the subdivision regulations, and all agencies can serve the property. It will allow the development of the vacant area as permitted by the MUC Zone District to proceed. For all those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request. I do have a revised motion that I'll distribute in just a minute, but I'm happy to answer your questions at this time.
Thank you. And does the applicant have a presentation? Thank you. So I will now entertain questions from the commissioners. Commissioners, you are asked to refrain from judgment either for or against the request, and to hold your comments of support or concern until after public comment. Tonight, we'll start on my left with Commissioner Krichiver. Any questions?
I don't have any questions right now, thank you.
Commissioner Sinbhai.
Yes, I know it's probably outside of the scope of what we're doing, but I am interested in what happens in the, in the new plat, the new lot that's created. It says it's a multifamily unit. It was just over there, right before it came, kind of small over there, so I'm just interested. Can we, can we learn a little bit about what's, what's proposed? You said there's a site plan in the works?
There is a site plan under review by staff right now. It is a multifamily site. Like you said, it is fairly small, so it is limited in size. I believe it's proposed to be a three-story building. Frank will have more detail than I do, but it's still under review by staff.
And the other question was just about the new street. It's, it seemed pretty tight back there as well. Could you talk a little bit about, is there expansion to? I mean, it would have cut off the lot. I was a little confused on how that, the street would look, because it seemed like it was just one car sort of width currently.
You're right, yeah, it's pretty narrow back there. So the proposal is to upgrade it to a full-width city street, and that includes, I guess, two travel lanes, parallel parking, attached sidewalk. So that's why there's 52 feet of dedication right now. I believe the easement is currently 30 feet, so that extra dedication will allow for those additional amenities.
Thank you. Commissioner Ohm.
Thank you. The first question is, is can you drive north from the subject property to the existing Vance to 44th Avenue?
There's not a connection directly to Vance at this time. There's a barricade in place, but there are access easements that will eventually take you to 44th Avenue if you head northbound. It's just a little bit circuitous.
And then can you tell us anything about why that is barricaded?
I don't have the full history on why it's barricaded. I don't know if Mark can chime in there?
I can, and I'm sorry, my voice is, is not doing great tonight. So if you guys, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So there's a pretty good grade difference. It's two and a half or three feet from the existing corner of the parking lot. It's really not so much parking lot as truck access area at the northeast corner of the Big Lots Ross property compared to where Vance Street is down lower. The city is actively looking at a potential design project and construction project to actually make that connection, but we're still working on the sort of mechanics of how that'll work there. There's some drainage back there and some other things we have to work through, and so we are going to try to make that connection. This, this, what seems like a small piece of Vance Street is really building for the future, for when, you know, potentially those two large commercial developments, you decide this one may redevelop, and we'd end up with a full street that connects all the way through back there.
Thank you. And then since the city is requiring a sidewalk on the east side of the subject property, that would, it would connect to nowhere at this time, correct?
It would only be on the west side of Tract A, so not the east side of Tract A.
Okay.
That said, it wouldn't connect anywhere north-south. There are east-west connections, though.
But it, it would provide pedestrian access to the parallel parking spaces there on that side of the street, so it does serve a function today.
Correct, okay. Bear with me here. So West Metro Fire looked at this and didn't have any issues, but as I think what Commissioner Sinbhai had stated was like the area that where the Safeway is, if you're coming south in that area, that is not passable for a fire truck, and Vance is blocked off. Are there any concerns from West Metro? How do they access that apartment complex? Can they, would they be able to drive with whatever development is going on to reach that? Or are they planning on just parking the, the fire truck at the, I guess, the post office parking lot using a hose or the, or somewhere else?
Will you pull up the slide with the regional connectivity? I think that might help to illustrate. Certainly, the fire district likes more access, the better, and their comment to us about the barricade has initiated us speaking to the property owner of the Big Lots and doing survey work to try to fix those grades that Mark described. But there are other alternate routes that fire can take, so they, they don't have any objection to this subdivision plan.
And I do realize that they are directly east of the apartments that is east of the subject property, correct?
The west of the fire station?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
If you can just put the whole slide up, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's on autoplay, so I have to...
Oh, oh.
And then the new, the new portion of Vance Street on that east side, that would become a public street, so that would be maintained by the city, but the portions, any, but the, I guess, the asphalt north or south of that would still remain private and not maintained by the city?
That's correct.
Okay. So there, there was a comment on the Wheat Ridge Speaks, just asking, I think it was talking about the same things, about the, right now, that, that whole area is essentially like an alley loading. And I think they were kind of wondering about how that area is utilized for parking. I'm not sure if they meant, I mean, right now, I now understand there's parking on the, to the north of the subject property, which I've honestly, I've, I've driven there, I haven't seen very many cars parked back there, but I don't know if this is the time to talk about that comment, or if we should wait.
I think I can address it now. I mean, the only improvements that we're going to be seeing as part of this development are what's shown in red on the site plan, so just along the site. Any future improvements would require the consent of that property owner, and likely would only occur with redevelopment, so this, this project is not affecting parking or access to either the Safeway or to the Ross Post Office Center. It's, it's purely being upgraded along its property frontage, and it will have, it will provide a better connection, better, you know, a city street is better than that existing alleyway as well. But yeah, there won't be any off-site effects.
Okay. And back to Mr. Westbrook's comment, maybe yours, and when I was reading, it says public improvements is, it said, it said Vance Street shown as track, this is on the city staff report number three, page three, it says Vance Street shown as Tract A, upgrading the existing paved access easement to a public street within the 52, 52-foot right-of-way, a five-foot sidewalk. So my, I'm still kind of confused. It still seems like the sidewalk is within the right-of-way, which we're creating, which is on the east side. But Mr. Westbrook said that the sidewalk was going on the, on the west side.
Sidewalk will be on the west side within that right-of-way that's on the east side. So the right-of-way is on the east side of the lot, but the sidewalk's on the west side of the street that's being built within that right-of-way.
So where my mouse is right now?
Yeah.
Along the west side of Tract A.
It's, it's not, for clarity, it's not on the property line side to the east.
Correct, it's not located in Lot 2, it's located in the right-of-way for Vance Street.
So that, and that sidewalk will just, like I said, it will just dead-end down north and south for now.
Correct.
Would I imagine that, even though it dead-ends, that it would somehow connect, or I guess the question is, how does it connect back to, I know there's existing sidewalks on Lot 1, on the west side of that Lot 1, next to that road?
Yes, so it does connect to sidewalks on Lot 1, and then Lot 1 has sidewalks that connect across that access easement to the Town Center Park, and then eventually Wadsworth, and then same for the south, so Lot 1 also has sidewalk connections to the Safeway.
Okay, okay, thank you. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Ohm. Commissioner Disney.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Kearns?
Sure. A question about the street, I think it's a hot topic. So what does it look like? How, how does the city pursue completing this street? Is it, it looks like there's a loading dock behind the Big Lots building, and then the Safeway is actually oriented to completely, you know, the corner of the, there's a corner of the Safeway that looks like it would be blocking a future roadway connection. So, I mean, are we talking about redevelopment of those properties, and then we could complete the street, or?
Right, so we acknowledge that this feels like an island of right-of-way, but it's an island in a mega-block. So the area between 38th and 44th, Uppam to Wadsworth, has no local street grid. It's enormous. That's, that's six, you know, what would be normally six residential blocks. When we did a lot of the Wadsworth design, we, part of the reason Wadsworth is so crowded is because there's no other alternatives particularly on that east side, so the only way to get a street grid over time is incrementally, and it started with the Town Center North Apartments at the north, which felt more logical because it's closer to 44th. This feels less logical because it feels like it's in the middle, and it is. But yes, the ultimate goal is that over time, likely decades, perhaps not in our lifetime, but eventually, if or when the developments to the north and south redevelop, then we will continue to pursue to try to achieve a more logical street grid within that super block. So for, you know, it looks like an island, it's this piece of red right-of-way, it's going to be floating out there. It's not probably going to feel as much like an island when you're out there, because there are already access easements and driveways that connect to it, so you'll be like, oh, this feels a little bit wider, and it has on-street parking, so you'll, visually, it will feel a little different, but functionally, it will probably feel very much like it does today. So we're trying to achieve sort of short-term logical design with long-term connectivity goals, essentially. But there will be no requirement of the existing owners with the current development schemes to dedicate or build that street. It only occurs if or when development occurs in the future.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. Commissioner Leo.
I think my questions were very much related to his questions, so I got answered.
Thank you. And I, my question is probably along, it is along the same lines, that we're, we have an existing easement both north and south of the subject property. The, this decision tonight involves widening the easement that's already there behind the subject property, and then as the development plan comes in, at that time, my question is, at that time, will an adequate part, number of parking spaces be addressed? Because even with the width of that, that property, it probably wouldn't be able to take more than four or five cars at the most, parallel parked. And then if you, I happened to drive by the property the other day, and to the east, there is a, eight, maybe six-foot grade where the adjacent property sits higher, and that grade would seem to prohibit development or any sort of addition on that side, maybe even the inclusion of a retaining wall, because it is fairly steep. Maybe even the inclusion of a, a retaining wall, because it is fairly steep. And so I, I guess, those are the sort of questions. It all gets back to this, this easement that's in place, and, and how this, what we're deciding tonight looks at expanding the easement behind the property. And it should be noted also that there is a second easement, a east-west, on the south side of the property between Safeway and the subject property, that I'm assuming would be used for access for the residents that, that occupy the multifamily building.
The east-west, yes. So that, that's actually in existence today as well, but it's being upgraded as part of future development along the subject property. So it's actually being widened to meet fire district requirements for access. You had a lot of questions. Is, is that the one you wanted to address?
Yeah, well, take the ones you think you can answer.
And you asked about parking. Any development of any type permitted by the underlying zoning through the site plan process would have to meet all of the development standards, so heights and parking and architecture. What we've seen so far does meet that, those standards, so we don't have many concerns. The parking for any development wouldn't be fulfilled solely by the on-street parking. They will be providing some off-street parking as well.
Exactly.
And, and again, just to follow up there, so we're, we're very clear with the question about the properties to the north and the south. There is an easement that extends all the way to Forty-Fourth. On the south, the easement obviously ends at the West Thirty-Eighth apartment building. And you make a ninety-degree turn, and then another ninety-degree turn to get onto the driveway entering Thirty, Thirty-Eighth, where the traffic light is.
That's correct. In my image, cut, cut that off, but it does actually, there, there are easements all the way to Thirty-Eighth Avenue as well. Actually, in a couple of places, because there's also access easements along the front side of the Safeway and over to Wadsworth. I kind of showed selected ones, but pretty much any drive aisle in that shopping center is actually an access easement. And then there's a hierarchy within the shopping center, as far as, some of them go all the way through and some don't.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate that. I have no further questions? And any follow-up questions from the commission? Commissioner Simba?
Just more comment, two comments. One, when you travel on the south side of the current property, east, there's some sort of divider kind of wall-looking thing there. I would want that probably. I'd love it to be taken down. I was, I was worried about my car traveling through it. The other thing is, the apartments on the, right to the east of the current property, ice, you said there's really no access, but I saw a family kind of walking through there. And so I wondered if, on the east side of, I guess it would be Vance, what the plans might be. I wouldn't want to cut people off from their typical plans, but at the same time, maybe that's not the best way to do it, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah, and there is a break in the fence in that location. Did you want to address that?
Please step up to the podium there. And repeat your name, please.
Yeah, Frank Sepirati. So with parking, I have some rough numbers because I have some rough plans, but that Vance Street dedication, I'll be creating and obviously dedicating after I foot the bill to construct it, all according to the city's standards. That's going to have about ten parking spaces on the street, street parking. In our future proposal for the construction, which will be under review, we have, I think, anywhere between twenty and twenty-three parking spaces there. So I know if you guys remember, but I did the six-plex across Wadsworth, and that was a big concern with the parking. So duly noted, I understand it's a big concern. I live right down the street as well. I definitely want to provide and build more than the minimum parking spaces. So if there are any concerns or worries on that, you have my word. We've got eight or ten on-street for the new beautiful fifty-two-foot Vance Street, and then we're going to have anywhere between twenty and twenty-three off-street parking provided. What was the other comment you guys were talking about? The fence being down? So there are people, they come through all the time. They're going to Safeway. They're going to the post office. They're going to Ross, whatever that might be. My intent is to beautify the area and provide a safe access to go through. The current owner, Joseph, who will be here for the city council meeting, he has rebuilt that fence probably six times, and no matter what you do, they're going to take it down. So why, why, you know, why restrict something that is inevitably going to happen? So we'll beautify the fence. We'll give it a nice path. It'll connect to the Vance Street, which will then connect to all the connecting sidewalks. You can't stop that, and there's no need to stop that. That podium sign that you saw coming through the parking lot, that's definitely getting all redone. If you remember on that site plan, the current easement, I think, is twenty-two feet coming down the south side of that property. We are enlarging it to twenty-six feet, part of West Metro's comments. So West Metro is intending on coming down the twenty-foot easement, which is south of that office building. They now step into our twenty-six-foot easement with an increased radius turn onto Vance Street, being able to tie into the new fire hydrant that I will be installing as well, right in front of the building. And the building will be sprinkled, so that helps alleviate a lot of pressure as well.
Commissioner Alm?
I just, yeah, could you, you were talking about the fence. Where's the issue with the, the fence that?
It's on that east side between the subject property and the current two-story properties. There's a six-foot cedar fence that goes along there.
Yeah.
And they'll take down any section at any time, and Joseph has rebuilt it all the time.
So what they, what those residents want is they want access prior to go to like the Safeway store?
I think someone even drove through it, and they took down a large, large section. So we will beautify it and make it a nice inviting entrance so they can get to the shopping centers.
That, so you're, you're saying that you're not going to reconstruct the fence? You're going to leave it open or put it, or gate or whatever? That's, okay. Is that something, this is for staff, is that something that the city is flexible on? As far as, I mean, what, what is the, I guess, what is the, I guess, law ordinance about fences? Is it?
I mean, the fact that cut-through is happening is a testament to the need for better connectivity and grid in this area. So we would not require that they close it. I'm not sure if we can require that they keep it open either, but it's certainly something that we can talk about through the site planning process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. No further questions.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, we'll now open the hearing for public comment. If you wish to comment in this case, you will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Speakers may not donate their time. When I recognize you, please give us your name, spell your last name, and share your address. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
We do not have anybody signed up, but we do have two people still joining us in the Zoom format, and I have just enabled them to speak. So if you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a comment on the subdivision, you should be able to go ahead and start talking. Does not look like anybody is raising their hand or beginning to speak.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak? Please speak now before I close the citizens' forum. I will now close the citizens' forum. And before I entertain a motion, I'd like to see if the staff or the applicant has any other comments regarding the questions that were raised.
No further comments from staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve, recommend approval of case number WS-21-01, a request for approval of a major subdivision with right-of-way dedication and property located at 4100 Wadsworth Boulevard and Zone Mix Use Commercial for the following reasons. Number one, all requirements of the subdivision regulations, Article Four of the Zoning and Development Code, have been met. Number two, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall pay the required fee in lieu of parkland dedication at time of building permit if residential development occurs. Number two, the developer shall enter into subdivision improvement agreement with the city at the time of recordation of the subdivision plat. Number three, minor corrections to plat labeling and symbology as requested by the Engineering Division shall be made prior to recordation of the plat milearm.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We'll now open the discussion for commissioners. We'll start on, this time with Commissioner Kearns.
It seems like maybe we should think about a pedestrian access on the east side of Vance. And it sounds like there's not existing, an existing vehicular access between Vance and the apartments, but maybe we could consider that as well if the, if the apartments were to be in favor. But I think it sounds like a pedestrian access could be good. It sounds like there's some, some demand there. That's all I had.
Commissioner Leo?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Disney?
No comments.
Commissioner Alm?
Yes, I think originally I had a lot of questions, many more questions that I did not ask that were, that were answered tonight. I think, I'm definitely going to vote in favor. I feel very, I'm very happy that the applicant is working with the city to just provide that pedestrian access. I think that is something that is very needed in We Ridge, where we have opportunities. Instead of, you know, continually fighting that, to try to make that work. I know it can be frustrating sometimes, you know, where one owner doesn't want the fence or another one wants it, and, and trying to make that work. So I am, I, it's a, it's a, I will say, it's a very unique situation. And then when I look at this, I also try to think about, you know, what are some other similar projects? There was a project that was proposed by Mr. Cutler on South of Thirty-Eighth. That was a retail, and it had townhomes behind it. And that one, I think we voted in favor for. It was kind of unique, and it had access to Thirty-Eighth. And then, and then just thinking about that whole, the other development where we had the Lucky's. And if you really look at that and how it has, it's only about a third of the length, but it has about three streets that cut east-west. It has really good connectivity on that project, whereas this one doesn't. And so this is, we really do need to think about long-term of what we're, what we're doing here and what we're trying to connect. And I, I hope that the city really does get rid of that blockade that's on Forty-third and, and make that grade work. I think that'd be a huge improvement. I, I can tell you honestly, right now, I, I live closer to Thirty-Eighth, and sometimes I go to the post office, and I, I might decide I want to go to Forty-Fourth. And so it's like, what are my options? Well, I usually will go north a little bit by the First Bank, and then I actually turn into that old Panda Buffet to cut through that parking lot to get to the Vance Street because it's a signalized light. Usually, it, it feels a little unsafe if I was to continue on that First Bank private road and try to take a left on a Forty-Fourth, just because of the, the amount of vehicles that are coming in. And I would assume that probably when, Wadsworth is done, there might be a median that would prevent that turn from happening at all. And so I think this would be a, I, I hope the city works on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Alm. Commissioner Simba?
I just wanted to comment and appreciate both the current planning and the future planning of this. Lauren, you said, "Maybe not in my lifetime. I hope I can hang out long enough to, to see how this connects." But I really appreciate sort of thinking through that. And the one public comment that came through We Ridge Speaks, I think, was addressed. So I'd appreciate that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Simba. Commissioner Kurchatter?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. And if I could add one other comment on this. When I originally read the presentation, I had some concerns, primarily about the fact we were looking at dedicating a street that really connected to driveways, a street connecting to a private driveway. But as we got into it, and, and I do appreciate the comments, it seems that this project is a, a puzzle piece, but a very important puzzle piece. As We Ridge looks at the Wadsworth corridor redevelopment in years down the road, when we're all maybe somewhere else, the, the two primary buildings, north and south of this property, may become something else. And at that time, the, it would seem like the mechanism would be in place to create, actually create a Vance Avenue that runs all the way up to Forty-Fourth. Again, with the West Thirty-Eighth building kind of just plopped down right at the end there, it does make that last turn a little bit tricky, but, and I, I am also appreciative of the fact that there will be some changes during this project that allows for fire access because that, that east-west drive to the south of the building is, is probably too narrow. So, so I was very glad to hear that. And again, I appreciate all the attention to detail on this. And as, as much for a project today, we're looking at connecting with projects in the future. Thank you. So we, at this time, we'll call for a vote on, on this issue. Commissioners?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Tammy. I will now open the public hearing for case number ZOA-21-01. This is a proposed code amendment modifying Chapter Twenty-Six of the We Ridge Code of Laws concerning the city's floodplain regulations. A reminder, we typically administer an oath for any participant in a public hearing, staff, applicants, and the public. In this hybrid meeting format, we are administering that oath in a different way. If you wish to comment during tonight's public hearing, by choosing to testify, you are agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. May we please have the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So joining us on Zoom tonight is Mark Westburg. He is in our Engineering Division, and he is the city's floodplain manager. So he'll be sharing his screen, if he's got slides, and presenting to you virtually. Mark, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go.
Thanks, Lauren.
Yeah.
And I apologize for my voice. I may be taking some breaks, so I can cough a little bit. I'm having some lung issues this week, but I'm doing much better. So that's why I'm at home instead of there sharing the, sharing the podium with you. So I will, I will share screen and see if I can pull this off. Are you guys seeing my presentation?
Yes.
Thanks. So as Lauren mentioned, we're just doing some revisions to the floodplain regulations. The FSHA stands for Special Flood Hazard Area. That's our industry term for floodplain. I have to figure out how to get it to advance. On the agenda tonight, we're going to talk about no camping in the floodplain. And then, as we were, as we were sort of looking at this issue, some other things came up, and we discovered some issues with the way our code is currently written. So we're also going to talk about how we approve Class II floodplain permits, both in the BOA public hearings, what the Appeal Board is, and some related appeal invariance regulations that are, that are in that part of the code. So I always like to start out with why we are here. The Mile High Flood District, they used to be known as the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, and on your property tax record, it may still show that way. But we all pay a little bit of tax to them every, every year as a part of our property tax that funds them. The city's part of that district and a member of the board. Mayor Stark is our board representative. And that's their new logo. They rebranded a couple of years ago, and this is their new logo. They, it's just Urban Drainage and Flood Control. Nobody knew which urban they were a part of, so they named themselves Mile High Flood District. So in October of 2019, the district adopted some no camping regulations. And the reasons of those regulations, let me, let me add one more thing. The district helps the city a lot, and a lot of cities in the metro area will, with helping to maintain their major drainage ways. They've got a lot of expertise. They've got a lot of really good contractors that work for them. So if we need any kind of stabilization work or something like that down in the creek, or creeks in, in the gulch, then they come in and help us with that. So they, they have a tremendous amount of knowledge on what goes on in the floodplains and the impacts of what people do there. So the reasons they adopted these no camping regulations are not anti-homeless. They're, they're pro-safety. Is that floodplains are high-risk areas. Swift water rescues endangered first responders. The materials at these campsites, I'm just going to use the term materials. We've got some pictures later on, add to the potential debris load in the stream. So a lot of the issues in the 2013 floods was there was a lot of water. So a lot of the issues in the 2013 floods was there was a lot of water, but there was also a lot of stuff floating in the water that, that created problems. And then what I'm going to call byproducts of these campsites, the trash, quite frankly, human feces are an issue. Those, those products are hazardous to others and to, and to the folks that are actually at the campsites. And they're high-risk. In July 21st of 2019, there was a high-water event. It wasn't a flood, it was just a snowmelt event. It was just a high-water event in the north dry gulch in Lakewood. And there was a 30-year-old female that was drowned there. She was a person experiencing homelessness and was, was sleeping down by the creek when the, when the water hit. Her body was found a day later, quite a ways downstream. The area that the body, her body was found in was reportedly 10 feet underwater is what the, the news media said. The, the issue with this is, you know, someone calls, someone's fallen in the water, well, the water's moving so quickly that you're just gone before the rescues can even respond, unless they get hung up on something that happens to be above water. But I think the water was still rising when she got swept away. And so that was, that was the problem. So these, these floodplain areas are high-risk for loss of life. And this is, these are some graphics that the district found. They are often called in by jurisdictions to help clean areas up that are doing things. This is a very large box culvert that I could probably walk through and I'm 6'4", and it's just full of stuff that if a floodwater hit this area, this would impair the ability of that box culvert to convey the flows that it's designed for and potentially cause flooding upstream. And if, if it suddenly broke free, then it would potentially cause flooding downstream by having a surge. This is just another graphic under a bridge, and these are all tents and stuff that are down there. But again, just showing the level of, of activity. You can see the stream now, it looks like this tiny little stream, but you know, this is a very low-flow time of the year. But even at this time of year, we can still sometimes get higher flows because of snowmelt or a rainstorm that happens, you know, in a, in a fluke warm, warm part of the year. So byproducts, I'm not sure what's in all this picture, but there's a lot of trash there. And at most of these encampments, most people just walk down to the creek or go near the creek or something to go to the bathroom. And so those byproducts become a problem also. This is another example of a place where the encampment that was there is left, but this is what they left behind. And now city staff or district staff has to go in and try to clean all this stuff up. They, they generally have to wear suits because they just know what's in there. You just never know what's in the trash bags and stuff. So it becomes a real issue for the safety of the people even going in to clean up. And if we were to have a flood, before they could go in and clean this up, all this stuff ends up somewhere downstream. So want to step back for two seconds and talk about why? Step back for more than two seconds. Hang on just a minute. I can't figure out where my mute is on this thing now. Sorry, just have to cough occasionally. Why do we have floodplains? Our, our goal of a floodplain is not to regulate stuff, it's to protect people and property. And the, the main goal of a floodplain is to communicate risk. And so this is a, a statistic I often use in my floodplain presentations, which by the way, is happening next Wednesday night on the 23rd. We're having our annual meeting. Over a 30-year mortgage, if you're in a 100-year floodplain, you have a 26% chance of getting flooded. That's pretty high in my mind. But you would think, well, the encampment's not going to be there for 30 years, so they're, they're lower risk. Well, if you're near the edge of a floodplain in any given year, everywhere in the floodplain has a 1% chance of getting wet that year. If you're, if you're down in an area that would normally be inundated by snowmelt, not even a, a smaller flood, but just snowmelt, you're, you're exceeding a 10% chance of getting what? The time, in the time that you're there during that period of time. So it's still a higher risk than I'm willing to take kind of thing. So let's talk a little about what floodplains are. The floodways, the part in the middle, and that's the most dangerous part of the floodplain. It's got the highest flows, depths, and velocities. We don't allow new buildings in floodplain, floodways. And if you've got a house in a floodway, which we have a bunch of them in Wheat Ridge, if it's substantially damaged in some form or fashion by fire, flood, or whatever, then we can't let you rebuild because when you rebuild in a floodplain, you're supposed to build to the standards. Where a standard is, no houses in the floodway. So we're not, we're not trying to be overly harsh with, with people that are camping. We're just holding them the same standard that we hold houses to. It's not a safe place to be sleeping. The flood fringe, the part outside the floodway, we require buildings to be elevated by one foot above that base flood elevation. Well, you can't really elevate a tent. They're supposed to be built of flood-resistant materials and there's no hazardous materials allowed. So, you know, if people are cooking down there and they're doing things, they often have things that are hazardous they might be using, would be considered a hazardous material to do that with. So the discussion is, should the city adopt the same or similar regulations prohibiting tents and makeshift structures in the floodplain? Now I need to take a quick peek. Oh, and just as a side safety note, if you're ever down in our creek areas and you hear the sirens go off that there's a flood coming, or you get a warning, there's a flood coming, don't run downstream. Go directly per, perpendicular to the creek and head up the hill. It's a much shorter trip to get out of the floodwaters going that way than it is to try to get downstream. So that's just my little safety, my little safety catch on that. So that's, that's sort of where we are. And we can stop and have a discussion on this now, or we can, we can table this and just talk about everything all at once when I'm done. It's whatever the commission desires.
Mark, if you could finish your presentation and then we'll do a public comment and then we can get into discussion. Thank you.
Sorry, I patterned this after what we did in study session. We didn't have, we didn't have all those rules to make me behave.
Thank you.
So we'll talk about floodplain permits now. So we issue what's called a Class II floodplain permit for new habitable structures or dwelling units. So houses, apartments, townhomes, duplexes, anything that somebody's going to live in has to have what's called a Class II floodplain permit. We don't get a lot of these. I last processed one in 2016, so it's been, and, and the one we did before that was about five years before that. We happen to have two Class II permits in process right now. And as we were discussing these, and I'm going to give full credit to Scott Cutler, he's the one that thought of this and said, you know, where are we going through this really involved process? Seems like this could be simpler. So our current approval process is, there's a, there's a review by the floodplain administrator, that would be me. And then after all of that stuff's met, after we meet all the building code regulations, the zoning regulations, the floodplain regulations, we take it to the Board of Adjustment for final approval. And it's a public hearing and they only meet once a month with a two-week noticing period. So, so you can, you know, that can stretch out to the approval of, of what's happening here by quite a bit. So the concern with having the Board of Adjustment do this is normally the board is not hearing cases that are following the regulations. They're hearing cases that involve variances to the regulations. And so their, their function is really to allow projects that violate those regulations if the people do all the right things or convince the board that they've got a hardship and all those kind of things. So it's, it's very much not a thou shalt follow the rules group of folks. It's a group of folks that, that by and large, their purpose is to let people violate regulations, to use a harsh word, because of some particular circumstance that they have. The problem with the floodplain, we're not asking for variances, we're just asking for them to basically say, yep, what the floodplain administrator has done is, is good to go. So it's a very, it's a role that's completely outside their normal sort of function of what they do. And the perception that people have is that because something's gone on the board, they've somehow been granted a variance. I reached out to several state and federal folks that I know, staff that I know, to talk about this issue when we, we started talking about this a month or so ago. And the first reaction I got from them when they said, yeah, that there's a, we have a board called the Board of Adjustment that hears the floodplain permits. They all freaked out. They all like, you know, I could see in their emails, they were panicked about, are you granting variances? What's going on? It's just very name, Board of Adjustment, just makes people think there's a variance going on. And the, the issue is that there's no federal or state requi, oh, there's not an issue, it's just, I checked with our federal and state folks and they said there's no federal state requirement that requires approval beyond technical staff. In fact, when I, when I asked them that question, the answer I got from all is like, you guys require that? I don't know if anybody else requires something beyond staff doing this. And from a customer service standpoint, we just think by having the applicant have to go to the Board of Adjustment is, is really a customer service issue. There's an additional fee associated with that and, and these permits are cheap, they cost like $2,000 because of the level of staff review that has to go into them. And it delays things by up to a month from issuing a permit. You know, we, we've worked for several months. Generally, it takes a few months to get through a permit. We worked through that with them to get everything right. And now suddenly you're going to, you know, you've got to wait a month before we can actually issue this because we have to go before the board. And the other, the other concern is that there's an opportunity for the public to object to a project that would otherwise be approved. Someone wants to build a single-family house on a lot that's zoned for it, that meets all the building code zoning and, and floodplain requirements, and this gives them a public opportunity for, this gives their, their neighbors, potential future neighbors, a chance to show up and say no. And that did happen in 2016. And, and the applicant at that time almost didn't get their project approved because the, the neighborhood was very vocal about not wanting that, that lot to be changed from a vacant lot into a, into a house, which was, which was not the way things should have gone with that because they met every requirement they needed to meet. So moving on to how our appeal process works, so we have things, what's called a Class I floodplain permit, which is literally everything else, fences, sheds, you know, a little bit of grading and some different things, it's everything but houses. The current appeal process is if I approve a permit with conditions or I deny a permit, then it goes to the board if the applicant doesn't agree with the conditions or doesn't agree with the denial. And then we have a public hearing and the review criteria for this, for this appeal is very, very technical stuff. And the, the issue is if, if they go against the decision that I make based on the code, then they could be granting a variance, which in, in our world of, of sort of planning and zoning things, a variance is not the end of the world, it's just a variance as we've talked about. But in the floodplain world, variances are a huge deal. There's a separate state and federal process that is very arduous that should take place before that hearing occurs or before that final approval of whatever condition is being, is being changed occurs. So our current process is we'd have to prepare a memo based on the criteria and the regulations, and those variance criteria loosely follow the state and federal criteria. So we're good there that our code follows the state and federal code. And the board has a public being to decide on the variance. And then what our code says is that we will refer the variance to the, to the federal agency only if that agency asks us for it. And that, that is a direct violation of both state and federal law. So, so that part of the code, we really, really have to change. We're supposed to refer these things to them before that happens. And it, and quite frankly, the reason we have our code on floodplains is we're trying to protect life and property. And if we give a variance, then we potentially are threatening life and property. And so that's why variances and floodplain stuff are a big deal. And the federal state regulations, it's a lengthy and arduous, but like you have to look at every other option you can possibly do to, to get what the applicant wants without granting the variance. And that process gets bypassed with the way our code is currently written. And the other, the other big thing, if, if we as a city, if the board was to grant a variance to somebody that was deemed a serious enough variance by the, the federal agency, then it could violate what's called our CRS program. And our, CRS is our community rating system. And it's a, it's a program, it's a voluntary program that we're in and we're a Class V community in that program, which that means is all of our residents that are in floodplains are paying full rates, get 25% discount on their flood insurance. And that is a huge deal when you're spending 1,200 to $1,400 a year on flood insurance. So that 25% discount's a big deal. If we were, if our board, out of the kindness of their hearts to the applicant, was to grant a variance that violet, that was considered a serious enough violation of our code, then we could lose our CRS program and everybody in the, in the city that has that discount suffers by having their flood insurance jump by 25%. That's, that's how big a deal variances are in the floodplain world. So the discussion on this one is, should the city revise regulations to do all that stuff? And so I just wanted to quickly summarize really quick. We're not doing discussion now, sorry, Lauren. Do a quick thing on proposed regulations is we're going to, is what we're proposing is prohibit tents and makeshift structures. The final approval for Class II permits would go to the floodplain administrator only. And I am, by the way, I am certified with the American Society of Floodplain Administrators. So I, I do have a little something backing me up on this. And if I ever get, you know, confused about something or concerned about something, I call the folks at the district and, and have them help me interpret things because they've got a lot of knowledge base there. Our appeal process would change, that it would be referred to the state and federal agencies first to go through that review process. And then instead of going to the BOA, which is, which is a bunch of really well-meaning citizens, just like you guys are, that are wanting to be involved in our government, which is great, it will be heard by a group that's the Building Code Advisory Board. And this is the group that hears appeals to the building code. So, you know, if someone doesn't like what our chief building official requires from them on a technical code, they go to the Building Code Advisory Board. So it establishes similar process for doing that. Our variance process would be, is going to change to pretty much mimic what's happening in the appeal process, which is it would be referred to state and federal agencies and it'd be, then would be heard by the Building Code Advisory Board after completing that state and federal process. So we're, we're at Planning Commission tonight. I'm going to talk about it next week. This is going to be sort of our quasi-neighborhood meeting on it. We're having our, we didn't have our annual floodplanning last year due to COVID and we're having it this year three months late due to COVID still. We were hoping to be able to do it in person and it looks like we'll be able to do that. And I'm hoping I'm much better by next week. We're going to do council reading on the 28th and then our second reading and council when we have the public hearing will be on July 12th. And that's all I've got. So I'm going to stop sharing unless you guys want to see a particular graphic that I flashed up.
Thank you, Mr. Westberg. I will now entertain questions from the commissioners. You are asked to refrain from judgment either for or against the request and to hold your comments of support or concern until after public comment. So this time we'll start to my left, Commissioner Kretschmer.
Just if I may, because this is not quasi-judicial, it's a legislative action, so the rules are a little bit more relaxed. So you can be, you can have an opinion in this case, more on the earlier side. Sometimes our code amendment questions and discussions get protracted, so I'll leave it up to you if you want to go through questions now or if you want to take. We still have two people on the Zoom. I don't know if they want to make a comment, but the rules aren't quite as strict because it's a code amendment instead of a property-related item.
So we can either go to commissioner questions now?
Right.
Or we can go to the public forum now?
Correct. Yep. And you're also not limited in terms of expressing your opinion because this is a legislative action.
Okay, I'm glad you made that very clear to us. I still think, but I'd like to hear from the commissioners first.
Sure.
And we'll start to my left, Commissioner Kretschmer.
Thank you. I do have some questions. So regarding the current regulation by the flood district and their 2019 camping ban, what's the enforcement mechanism for that regulation?
So if, if we don't make the changes to our code that we proposed, for instance, we would still be obligated by our, our, our participation in the district, our members in the district, to enforce that regulation. So when our code enforcement officers, when our community service officers go out and make contact with someone who's camping in the floodplain or if our parks personnel do or whoever it is, if they were, if they were to have to write them a citation, sorry, they would need to cite that regulation on our, on the citation, which makes things a little more mu, a lot harder for them and a little more muddled if the case were ever to go to court. It would, I think it would still stand up in court, but it just, it makes things a little more complicated that we're citing someone else's regulations. It makes it a little, it gives, it gives our, our officers a better tool to use if they were to, you know, that we could just cite our code directly on what the rules are. Somebody doesn't, the judge has, doesn't have to go look up, we don't have to go find that other code to do it. So it's just a better tool and enforcement tool for them to use.
And so when you say it's, it would be a better enforcement tool, what we're talking about is sort of in the prosecution of that citation, but in terms of actually enforcing the regulation sort of on the ground, when a code enforcement officer is there citing someone for a violation of the regulation, that, nothing about that process would change other than the logistics of which code the officer is citing to? Does that sound right?
In theory, yes. Excuse me. The other thing that, that may happen is we've got, you know, we've got some no dumping signs, for instance, and some, some other things like that in our parks and stuff that often cite the code section that it belongs to. And right now the sign can just say, "No dumping per Section 26- whatever." And that would, we'd be allowed, if, if we had a place that was a hotspot for camping, then we could put up a similar sign and it'd be a, you know, it just makes for a simpler sign. It's just, it just simplifies the whole, the whole dealing with the issue of people trying to camp on the floodplain.
The enforcement process wouldn't change. So what our officers are doing today, they'll continue to do, so it, it's a clarity issue and sort of behind the scenes, but the interaction doesn't change with the people in the floodplain.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the way our, our officers, you know, approach people, interact with people and all those kind of things is not going to change. It's going to still be a very direct, you know, interaction. And, and a goal, again, the, the goal is going to be to, to help that person get to a safer place. I mean, even if, let's say for instance, they're on the very edge of the floodplain and see that rideaway somewhere, and we'll say, you know what, if you move 20 feet over there, then you're okay, but where you are is not okay. And then that person can get moved 20 feet away and then they can start the process of trying to find a better option than, than living in a tent for that person, which of course is always our goal when we interact with folks that are in that situation. Our goal is not to just kick people out and move them, move them down, down the road, It's to try to get them out of that situation. But if they're in a particularly dangerous place, then we want to get them, we want to get them out of that dangerous place.
Thank you. And I want to I actually want to come back to that in a minute. But so under the current regulation, if someone is cited for a violation of that regulation, what type of penalty are they potentially facing?
I I don't know. I don't know anything about the the penalties and enforcement that our that our community service officers would would engage in in that situation.
But am I correct in in assuming that if this was codified in the city Wheat Ridge Code of Laws that the potential penalty for a violation of that would be the same for any other code violation, potentially a jail sentence or a fine, things of that nature?
I I assume that the penalty be will be the same as other things that we that we declare are illegal and unlawful.
You mentioned a minute ago that, and I I think we would all agree, the goal here is to help people get to a safer place. I I think my impression is that, you know, the people that this is going to affect directly are the unhoused population in the city of Wheat Ridge. Is there a plan for not just helping those folks get to a safer place in terms of not being in a floodplain, like sort of the immediate concern of we don't want you to get swept up in a flood? But is there an alternate plan for where folks like that can set up their habitation?
I'll maybe talk about that one, Mark, if you don't mind.
Thanks.
So Planning Commission is seeing this code amendment kind of in a vacuum. When City Council discussed it in May, they discussed it on the same night that the county's homeless staff were present. The city actually hired last year for the first time ever a homeless navigator. So she joined our staff during COVID. She spends the majority of her time in the field. On May, it was May 17th. So if you haven't not aware of that meeting, I would encourage you to look at those meeting documents, like 70-page report that talks about what the city and the county are doing, what we could be doing, how we can add more staff resources. And then it includes the two reports from the county's Heading Home Initiative, which the county also hired a homelessness, I think she's our regional coordinator. So throwing a lot more staff resources at the topic of homelessness, knowing that we've it's got to be a lot of different tools to solve this problem. More resources than I've seen in my 10 years, no doubt. We're talking about the 22 budget, including a housing navigator, so another FTE. There are a lot of federal funds right now and do do impart to COVID related to solutions to homelessness. So there's an incredible amount of momentum sort of unprecedented right now in the county. County doesn't Jefferson County doesn't have shelter beds. And that has been a primary goal of the Heading Home Group to address that. So there's active discussion on even just what we're calling Navigation Center. So sort of a day drop in, daytime resource center, how do we create emergency beds? Churches have done a lot over the last decade or so to sort of fill that need. But there there is there are conversations, council. It's one of their goals and their strategic plan. I think it was actually one of the first goals that we ended up talking to them in study session format about. Mark and I are certainly not the two experts. We go back to council in August, I think, to talk again about the housing navigator, August 2nd. So it's not it's not solved, but this is not just this is not happening sort of in what feels like a punitive way without putting other resources to that issue. It's also coming up a lot in the feedback we're getting through the Let's Talk program from neighborhoods across the city. Concerns, what are we doing about it? So it's it's elevated in a way from a policy standpoint that I haven't seen before. So if it's from a more global standpoint, if you're interested in what else is going on, I would highly encourage you to talk to your council members and keep looking for community meetings. We hosted a community meeting on the topic as well in in May, I believe.
And if I could, I'm going to see if my voice can pull off making two more comments in response because I do agree with everything that Lauren's saying. I've I've been here for 14 years and I've never seen the level of engagement at the council level that they're having right now with with this issue. So so for us, and I'm going to I'm going to give what seems like an extreme example. So if someone were to pitch a tent in the middle of Wadsworth and said that they were going to start sleeping there, they're they're at real risk of getting run over, right? And and the risk is is less immediate if you pitch a tent in a in a in a floodplain, but the risk is still there. There's still always a chance that you could have a big storm upstream and that water rushing down and and cause loss of life and property that they've got. When the Big Thompson Flood hit hit back in the day, and that was one of the driving forces that that really sort of drove a lot of what the the district is doing today, even though that's outside the district. The vast majority of people that died in the Big Thompson Flood, and if I'm right, the number was 160, were people that were camping along the creek or along the along the Big Thompson River. It was people who are camping right down by the creek, some of them in campsites. Some of them were just, you know, randomly on property that didn't seem to be used by anybody. Were camping there. The vast majority of people that died there were because they were camping there. And so so the risk is very real, even though it's not an immediate risk. Most of the time, the risk is very real. And that's that's why, you know, we all know that that, you know, getting people off the street in better situation is a long term problem, is a long term solution. It's going to take years to to make progress in that. But we we've identified we've identified a real risk here that we want to try to get people that are in that situation to to do so as safely as possible. And that means we've got to make sure that they stay out of the floodplains.
And I think probably my my last question for now. I I noticed in the proposed language, this phrase came up a couple of times that structures were prohibited except in locations expressly permitted by a floodplain administrator and having adequate sanitation facilities and flood evacuation plans. At this point, are there any plans for constructing adequate sanitation facilities or are flood evacuation plans being created at this point?
So the reason we've we've mirrored our regulations off what the district did. The reason the district has that is that Denver has one place that I I think it's near the Confluence or something like that that allows camping. And they've got toiletry facilities and things like that. They've got one location that allows that. And I think, you know, Golden has an RV park that's in the floodplain. There are probably some other jurisdictions that that have, you know, sort of campsites set up where people can come, you know, sign up for space and camp there, just like you would if you go to the mountains. The reason that's in there was to allow that facility that's in Denver to continue to exist, that it wouldn't get moved. If someone came to me and proposed that they would like to put a campsite in the floodplain, I would I would say, you know, I don't think our our rules allow that because you can't meet the one foot above base flood elevation and all the other things that go along that. Even though camping is a transient, time wise thing, and again, getting flooded is generally not an immediate risk, but it's still a risk. I would argue very strongly against allowing something allowed camping of any kind by anyone in our floodplains. It's just not a safe place to be sleeping.
Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Thank you. And we'll go to Commissioner Semby.
Thank you. Wanted to say to Mr. Westberg, thank you for that presentation. Really appreciate it. Very thorough. I think my question is more suited for Lauren. And I don't know how to really word it. I've been struggling with trying to think about how to say it. But this idea of ministerial versus discretionary, you know, if somebody puts in for a permit and everything fits, you know, what Mr. Westberg says is right, the idea that the public could come in and say, I have a problem with this exists in the current model. And it seems like that's proper, but I I'm just struggling with that idea. Like, we get rid of that idea, is it the public doesn't have any option or is it in another way?
Yeah. It's a good question. I mean, so I I think you all experience this sometimes. So subdivision plots are a ministerial action. There's not just they're not criteria for review. It either meets the code or not. Part of the reason we have a public hearing is to allow some transparency. Plots are usually going to be associated with some future development. We're trying to put sort of the community on notice. So you've experienced the situation where you have a document and folks are sort of using that hearing opportunity to express grievances that you can't really utilize in your decision making. In the case of the floodplain public hearings, the same was happening. And and the Board of Adjustment only really ever looks at things where they get to use wide discretion. So the only reason a variance often goes to the Board of Adjustment is because they didn't meet enough of the criteria for staff to support it. The board doesn't they can ignore all of the criteria in the code. They have like much wider discretion than Planning Commission and Council. So they're very accustomed to using that latitude. And I've seen them very much struggle with the idea of having to review something technical. So the and then on the other end of the spectrum, a building permit. So you come in and you want to build a shed. It meets all the zoning requirements, check, check, check. There's there's nothing in the code that would sort of give an objection right to a neighbor when you're meeting all of the the rules that apply to everyone universally. So in looking at the code and sort of neighboring communities, this Class Two floodplain permit is really a technical review. They have to meet not only city, but also these regional and or rather state and federal floodplain regulations. And there's not a lot of latitude in there. And so the process for review feels very mismatched with the review that should be taking place for that kind of project. So that's really where we when there's a when there's a discrepancy between what should be ministerial and is offered discretion, it opens a city to liability. I think it creates false expectations for the public. They're sort of told you can come testify, but we're telling the board you really can't use discretion. So it's just it's not it's not really appropriate. And I think it sort of sets everybody up for failure, unfortunately. There is an appeal right to the Building Code Advisory Board, but they're much more accustomed to working in the territory of technical review.
And Lauren's Lauren's spot on with that. And I play add one more thing. So if if I there's a vacant lot next to my house and it's out of the floodplain, someone can just go pull a building permit. Long as they meet all the rules, I really can't tell them what they can do. They could build the house that they want to build. And having it be in a floodplain just adds some additional technical nuance to it. It doesn't really add. And there's no real reason to suddenly have that have that rise to a level of having a public hearing. And and the case I mentioned before was just, and I'll I'll talk about some particulars without naming names. A neighbor did not want a two-story house next to her house. And so she literally came in and read our entire city code and picked out every random comment that she thought she could use to shoot that project down and met with me and went over all of them. And I said, well, that doesn't imply that's about parks or that's about sidewalks. It's not about a floodplain permit. And and spent several hours with her going through all of that. And and she convinced a couple of members in the board to vote no based on the fact there was a there was allegedly foxes and bunnies and all those kind of things living in the vacant lot, which is not part of our approval process or jurisdiction. So it just and and these folks that that did this permit went above and beyond. We're supposed to be one foot above. They put their house three feet above. I mean, they they went above and beyond to meet the regulations and do this as safely as they could for themselves. And they almost got shot down after spending like two years working on this because of the fact there was a public hearing process that allowed the neighborhood to come and object to something that they really had no right to object to. It was just someone building a house on a vacant lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Semby. Commissioner Ohm.
Oh, sorry. I have a couple of questions. So there's the first question is on the the page of the ordinance, there's something. Could you could you explain why there is a specific example where it states about the drowning death of the 30-year-old? Why is that part of the ordinance?
Which page?
It's the it's the first page, first page of the ordinance.
Oh, the declaration statements?
Where it says, "City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, introduced by council member."
The whereas statements?
Yeah, the whereas statement on the bottom there.
Yeah, so typically, they're not often this lengthy. This ordinance was drafted by our city attorney's office. The we call those the declarations and they're meant to sort of tell the story why this ordinance is getting passed. So it's not part of the code. It's just sort of the preamble that explains why the ordinance is.
Okay, so that won't be part of the code?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question is, is there anything in the floodplain ordinance that prohibits trees being cut down in the floodplain?
No, our our floodplain doesn't address trees. And actually, I don't think our anything in our city code prohibits someone from cutting down trees. I know there's been some discussion in the past about about doing things. But, you know, when we had that that microburst event back in.
2009?
Yes. We lost a lot of trees in our floodplain areas. And the district was great. They came, they swooped in and their contractors and staff got those trees all out of there because that, again, those down trees add to debris load, potential debris load on the on the stream if we have a flood. So they came in and got all that material removed out of there. You know, somebody in the floodplain lot could clear cut their site if they wanted to. And we don't, we as a city just don't regulate or protect the trees that we have at this point.
Because I've I've worked with other under the projects with flood with that same flood district and was told that to, you know, be careful about removing trees or definitely adding evergreen trees that could get swept down and and create more problems. So they're a little more specific on there. And I'm just wondering if the cutting of trees would, because the trees, the trees reds provide a lot of structural integrity to some of those banks. And so if you're cutting down the trees, you're losing that integrity and and.
Yeah, so that's likely a policy that that the district has when they're doing projects. So I know that when they when they do projects here and it becomes an environmental issue, depending on how big of an area you impact, you you kick in Corps of Engineers things and they've got they've got stuff about preserving trees. But our city code itself in the floodplain and other regulations don't don't address trees at all, to my knowledge. I know the floodplain regs don't, I don't think we address it anywhere else here.
Okay. And then one last, I have a comment. I've actually, I I wouldn't call it fortune, but I witnessed a tarp flying near the on-ramp to I-70, like on Wadsworth, coming up from the river area. And it actually covered the semi truck as it was approaching, going eastbound, which was a little scary when you when you're you're in the right lane and you see that semi truck being covered. And he's got a little portion of his windshield he can still see, but most of it's covered by a tarp. And you you know where that tarp came from. It came from the it came from the Clear Creek area. That was probably an encampment because I could I witnessed other tarp-covered encampments in that area. And so it I guess it touches a little bit on the floodplain. But but anyway, that's that's my comment. I have no other further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Ohm. Commissioner Disney.
I have one question for clarification. I'm a little confused. Mark, earlier in your presentation, you were talking about if somebody had built a house in a floodplain and the house had experienced severe damage to the point where it would need to be rebuilt, you would not allow that structure to be rebuilt.
Yeah, so our a little little nuance on the language. And the floodway, which is that center portion of the flood. Yeah, so it's the whole thing is the floodplain. The stuff in the middle is the floodway. So when the it doesn't have to be completely damaged. If it hits 51% of its value, then I can't let that house be rebuilt because if that's that that becomes what's called a substantial improvement. If you if you do 50% of the value of the project of the of the house, if you do that much work, then you have to bring the entire house, not just like an addition or something. You have to bring the entire house up to the current standards. And our current standard is this, thou shalt not have a house in the floodway.
Okay, thank you. That's where I was confused.
Yeah.
And I my comment about this ordinance is I think we definitely do need it. There's a lot more. I've lived in this part of Wheat Ridge for 25 years, next to Clear Creek. And I have never seen as many campers as we have now. And it's it's amazing to me how much trash and debris is left behind. So I can understand the need to have this and I'll be voting yes for it. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Disney. Commissioner Leo.
Yes, I just wanted to know, are we still referring to the floodplain in different, like the 100-year floodplain? And there's another category. I know I can't think how many years it was, but are we still using that or is that still?
So so when I'm talking to public, I use the terms all interchangeably. So when I say floodplain, I mean the 100-year floodplain. Our our technical term for it is the special flood hazard area. What they'll tell you is that everywhere in the world is subject to flooding. It just some places the flood has to get really, really big to get there. So what we regulate is what's called the 100-year floodplain. The reason we don't like to use that term is that people think, well, it only happens once every 100 years. So we like special flood hazard area or just the term floodplain, knowing that that is what it is. It's the the part that has a 1% chance in any given year of getting flooded. And that's why it's called the 100-year floodplain.
Okay, well, I'm just I know where I live, there is a separation. Okay. Well, I'm just, I know where I live, there is a, a separation between the one category versus the other. And they had different standards as to what you could do.
Sure. So, and maybe that separation is that the nuance of the floodway, which is that center portion of the floodplain. There's also, we also have mapped a 500-year floodplain, which is a much larger area that has a much lower risk of getting flooded. And it's just advisory. It's not something that we regulate against. But it's just a, hey, this area's a higher risk than non-500-year floodplain areas of, of getting wet. But it's a much, much lower risk than what's in the 100-year floodplain.
Okay. That, that clarifies it for me because I wasn't sure exactly how far we were, what area we were speaking of. And then I have another question about the enforcement. Would it only, and maybe Lauren could answer this too. Is it only code enforcement that would enforce it? Or would the, just the regular police force enforce it if it was known to them?
Code enforcement among their responsibilities, that's a division of the police department. Parks, monitoring the parks and policing in the parks is the code enforcement jurisdiction. So I don't think our other police officers would be precluded from that, but it's primarily the code enforcement officers who are in that area.
But that is only during normal business hours, right?
No, they work, they, their staff extends sort of across weekends, weekdays, and unusual hours. They're not like office eight to five or anything.
Right. Well, that, I mean, that, you know, when we change things and we put in codes and we put in laws and things, it's very difficult to enforce them. So that was my question. Is this even enforceable? If someone, we're talking about the health and safety of the people. If they don't have a tent and they're just in a sleeping bag and they're sleeping along the creek, Clear Creek, aren't they in as much danger as if they had a tent? So are we covering anything like that?
Our police department and Judge Randall can speak to this more eloquently than I probably can. There, I mean, there's, there's putting a rule on the books and there's enforcing it. And there are probably a lot of rules that are either not enforced or are harder to enforce. This is certainly quite enforceable. But I know our police department prides itself on not sort of taking a heavy hand. So we, you know, we're throwing a lot of resources at trying to help the populations who are most likely to be potentially targeted by something like this. So it is enforceable. But I, I know our, our police and judge are really working on trying to find solutions versus what feels like punishing folks. So it's probably the extent of my expertise on that area, but certainly Chief Martha could speak to it further.
Yeah. And our, our discussion with council on that whole thing was, is really is, is our goal is to encourage folks to make better choices and safer choices versus flogging folks. Our, our goal is not to flog people. Our goal is to, to get people out of high-risk areas and get them into, into a safer place until we can get them into a better place, if you will.
Yeah. Well, that's why I was saying, if someone's just in a sleeping bag, they're at as much risk as if they put up a tent. So, you know, is there anything, there's nothing in here that covers, say, sleeping along the river or the creek?
Oh, you mean like without a temporary structure? Like if you're just there? Yeah. Mark, do, do you hear that distinction?
I do. And I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you. I think...
We can certainly talk to the city attorney about that.
Yeah. Because we are talking about safety and, you know, lives and, and danger and that.
Right.
I mean, that happens a lot where they don't have a tent. They're just in a vulnerable place. So...
And I, I think the other concern is we don't want to, we don't want to do this, that we regulate someone who goes to the park at lunch and flicks out on the grass for 30 minutes to take a nap. I mean, that's not, we don't want to kick them out. We want, we don't want people spending the night kind of thing.
Yeah. I think in that scenario, it's probably as much about educating than enforcing. It's not illegal to be somewhere, as I think our attorney would say. But we can help them choose a safer spot to be.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah. I mean, the Claris Law helps a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Kearns?
Can you just explain to me again, what, what does this change? It sounds like we're already enforcing encampments where we're already kicking them out or moving them. This just makes it illegal to camp? Or I, I don't understand what changes here.
This, this moves the regulation from being in the district regulations to putting it in the city's regulations, which, which eases the, the process of being able to do the enforcement should that become necessary. So, so our, and, and right now, I, I think, you know, until we start this conversation with the council and the chief was involved in our initial kickoff meeting, that the police department, I didn't know that the district had passed these regulations. So having it in the city books makes it much easier to enforce, makes it easier to appoint to, makes it sort of easier just to, to deal with on a day-to-day basis. So it, you know, it, it puts it squarely in our jurisdiction, not in, not in their jurisdiction.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. And if I, if I might, I'd like to review the, the sort of reasons why we are moving from the existing adjustment board to the building code advisory board. Can you summarize that again for us, please?
Yeah. So if you can, if you want to, Lauren?
I was going to offer, just, I work with the BOA a little more frequently. They do not have the technical expertise that we think would be more appropriate when processing a floodplain permit, is the short answer. And then further, the, by holding public hearings, we think we're creating sort of false expectations, both for the board members and decision-makers and for the public in terms of what the purpose and process of that review should be.
So it is a, a means of cleaning up the process?
Correct.
Okay. And, and help me out here. There was a discussion about, within the floodplain, there's something called a BFE. What is that?
Yeah. Sorry. I get stuck in acronyms sometimes. So the BFE is the base flood elevation. That's where we think the water's going to get to, is, is all that is. So, so we have, we have the flood, we have very detailed floodplain maps. It shows not just the horizontal limits, but also vertically where we think the water's going to be. And that way we can design projects to keep them out of the water, both horizontally by getting them out of the floodplain, or, or vertically by getting them above where we think the water's going to be. So if a flood does hit, the main part of that structure, the finished floor, the, the, you know, the furniture, everything about the house isn't going to get wet.
And the, those dimensions are included in, in the ordinance we have now?
So, so those vary everywhere. They're included in the mapping that we have now.
Okay. Okay. And I did go on to the city website today and looked up the flood hazard area delineations. There's two maps that are posted, two indexes that are posted there. The one for the Lena Gulch is fairly clear. It ends where Lena Gulch ends, at the Clear Creek. I did have a question about the Clear Creek index itself, though. There's a west of Kipling and an east of Kipling. And if you go east of, actually east, as you're going east of Wad's, does that extend to the city limits? Or, it looks like it goes all the way to Sheridan? And this is part of our...
Yeah. The, the Clear Creek floodplain goes all the way to the platte.
Right.
So what we have on our city website is just the part that, that is in our jurisdiction. Although some of our jurisdiction goes to Sheridan, the part of our jurisdiction that has floodplain in it does not go to Sheridan. It goes just a little east of Marshall Street, basically where the, what's the name of the park down there? Creekside Park. Just, just northeast of Creekside Park is where our city boundary ends that has floodplain in it. The rest of that floodplain is in Denver Adams County in Arvada, as you go east.
Thank you. Are, any other follow-up questions from the commission? Commissioner Kirshner?
Thank you. Just very briefly, just because it came up once already, I just wanted to clarify because it was in the presentation, I believe, but was not in our materials. In the declaration part of our materials where it discussed the woman that drowned during a high-water event, just to clarify for the record, that occurred in Lakewood, correct? Not Wheat Ridge?
Yeah. Yeah, that was in Lakewood.
And do we know anything about Lakewood's floodplain regulations and how they compare to Wheat Ridge? Or are they also part of the flood district that we are covered by?
Since, since the district passed these regulations in 2019, they've been working with a lot of the jurisdictions to get them incorporated in their code, just like we're doing tonight. I'm not sure what Lakewood status is. We had a, we had a kickoff meeting. It was supposed to be in, in like April of 2020, but it got delayed for obvious reasons to something like June or July. And again, I've not, I've not kept up with stuff. It's taken me a while to get to this. I've been a little distracted by the Wadsworth widening project, trying to get that thing to the finish line. So we're a little delayed in getting this enacted. But, but we are, we are wanting to get it enacted. But that's, you know, anybody in the district is under these regulations by virtue of the district right now. But, but most jurisdictions are adopting versions of this. Some are, are adopting things that are more stringent than this regulation. We chose to pretty much go with what the district had. We didn't see a reason to ratchet, ratchet down even farther on, on some of the stuff that's included here.
Thank you, Mr. Westberg. Any other questions? We will now open the hearing for public comment. If you wish to comment on this case, you will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Speakers may not donate their time. When you're recognized, please give us your name, spell your last name, and share your address. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No one has signed up. We are down to only one attendee in Zoom on the phone. So I will enable speaking. If you're on the phone on Zoom and you'd like to make a comment, please go ahead and unmute yourself using star six. I don't see that they've unmuted themselves. And we have no one else in attendance.
If there's no one else who, from the public who'd like to speak, we'll now close the citizen forum. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to recommend approval of a code amendment modifying chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the regulation of floodplains.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussions on the, on the motion? Commissioner Kirshner?
I would like to briefly comment about the proposed regulations. And as a, as a couple of commissioners have pointed out, there is currently a regulation that exists. And so the proposed amendment, and obviously I'm referring specifically to the, to the ban and not to the appeal process and that portion of the, of the proposal. But the proposed amendment won't actually change anything about the enforcement of a ban, of a camping ban. As noted repeatedly, there is currently a regulation. There has not been anything presented to suggest that there's any issue with the enforcement of that regulation or that it is ineffective in any way. And the explanation provided for why it would make sense to codify this in our city code of laws is in effect to make sort of a prosecution of that code simpler, you know, easier for, for the judge or easier for the, for the officers. But in terms of actual sort of on-the-ground action and getting people out of harm's way, this would not actually change anything. The proposed amendment doesn't actually do anything to address the underlying issue, which is why are people setting up tents and makeshift structures in floodplains in the first place? I am actually very thrilled to hear that the city council is devoting resources and paying a lot of attention to the unhoused population in the city of Wheat Ridge. I think that's a really important, you know, the entire metro area is struggling with it. And different municipalities are finding different, different and creative solutions for that. And I really think it would behoove us to allow the city council to let that process run so that we're not doing this a piece at a time. You know, we're going to have, impose a camping ban that already exists in floodplains. And then maybe there's going to be another piece later and another piece later. And then at some point, the city council is going to hopefully create some kind of more comprehensive plan that addresses the underlying issues. And I feel like we're just going to be back here in a year or two years revisiting this same ordinance because now the city council has instructed us, do they want to change it to add provisions or something like that? The commissioners may be aware, I sent around earlier today the language from Denver's municipal code that addresses their camping ban. I understand that Denver's camping ban is much more comprehensive than what we are dealing with tonight. But I sort of sent that around just by way of example of some of the creative steps that other municipalities are taking that do actually address the underlying issue. And Denver's municipal code provides, while it provides for a camping ban, officers are actually prohibited from issuing a citation unless, unless there have been, been a number of steps that they've executed, including helping that person who they are trying to cite connect with services, whether it be mental health services, substance abuse services, housing, employment, whatever services. And they have employees in the city of Denver to help connect those people to those services. And it's really only in the situation where a person's refusing services or not being cooperative with law enforcement that a citation may issue. There's been a lot of talk tonight about encouraging folks to make better choices, but there's nothing actually being codified to encourage people to make better choices. This is merely criminalizing their behavior. And the last thing I'll say is that I am aware that other municipalities that have imposed similar type camping bans are facing litigation. And I think that the city would be opening itself up to litigation about the constitutionality of, of a broad camping ban like this, with it doesn't provide any type of language for any legal defenses or anything like that. And so I do question its enforceability when it comes to sort of the prosecution side of this type of ordinance. So with all that said, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirshner. Any other comments? Hearing none. I'd like to call for a vote on the motion.
Motion passed five to two.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. I'd like to thank the participants tonight, especially our commissioners and Mr. Westberg, struggling through a, it sounds like it may be a bad cold, but I hope you're feeling better, Mark.
He's COVID negative, but I told him he couldn't come in person if he had any symptoms, not to ruin our first in-person meeting.
Yes. We certainly appreciate that.
I got, I got tested on Tuesday, so I feel pretty comfortable with that. I just, I can't, I can't talk without coughing. My, my lungs are jacking up right now.
We're on your side, Mark. Hope you feel better. Old business. Is there any old business to discuss?
No old business tonight.
Okay. We will move on to the, one of the more interesting parts of our agenda, the new business.
Yes. New business. Dates, we do not anticipating, anticipate needing either of the planning commission dates in July. We've got a couple cases in the hopper, but nothing ready.
I'm sorry. You said...
No planning commission in July, either date. Now I'm forgetting which ones they were. But we will see you in August. We do think we'll have cases ready in August. And in my focus on making sure the hybrid meeting format worked, I didn't prepare a lot of properties to discuss, but I do have lengthy Lutheran master plan updates to share. We're about halfway through the process already, which is kind of flying by. It's incredible. We had our second of four public meetings on June 10th. The open house campus tour, you'll remember, was in-person. Public meeting number two was virtual. And it has a companion activity online that is currently still available through mid-July to take. It was a good group. We had 50 people, I think, join on the virtual meeting, sort of live. The live activity in the meeting and the online activity are the exact same. The benefit of the live was that we could sort of answer questions as we went along. The activity online that we encourage folks to take essentially asks about land uses and how you would prioritize different types of land uses, different types of housing, where you would prioritize them on different areas of the campus. So if you haven't taken it yet, feel free to. It's on our What's Up Wheat Ridge page. And spread the word. You have been very successful, you and others, in spreading the word. We have over 1,300 views on the project webpage, which is starting to set a record in our use of What's Up Wheat Ridge. So thank you for that. Continue to stay involved. We did set dates for our next two public meetings. I don't think we've put them on the site yet, but I'll share that update with you now. We know calendars fill up, so we have selected... We know calendars fill up, so we have selected August 2nd is our public meeting number three, and September 22nd is our public meeting number four. We will have study sessions with council and planning commission prior to the October hearings, when we're adopting it. So, we're moving quickly. We've got something kind of every month, the survey in July, public meeting in August, public meeting in September, study sessions, and then adoption in October. We will go to planning commission in October, in the early meeting in October, and then to council. Our goal, when we have this kind of a community-wide process, is to make sure that the council that is active on the project is the council that gets to adopt it. So, in advance of Election Day is what our sort of goal has been, to get to them. Let's see, the only other update I have is maybe a staffing update. I think you know that Stephanie is expecting, so you probably won't see her again until towards the end of the year. She's heading out in a couple of weeks. And we are actually so busy with building permits this year, we are hiring somebody in the zoning division just to look at building permits for us. It's incredible. It's sort of an unprecedented volume, big projects, small projects, lots of people who are home during COVID, doing, like, brainstorming projects, I think. So, that's exciting. We'll have that person joining our team. I don't expect that he'll come to planning commission often, but we are growing. Our division is actually kind of...
Lauren, can you give us an idea of the sort of change between, in terms of permits that you guys work in?
Yeah, let me pull up. We had to go to council earlier this year and ask them for a budget supplemental, essentially, to hire this person, just in a temporary, sort of two-year term. And I had pulled data for that. Let me pull it up real quick. Let's see.
And in the meantime, I think everybody saw the announcement of the groundbreaking for the new hospital?
Yes.
That was pretty well-attended as well. And I have to add that I did complete the legacy campus survey.
Oh, good.
And I thought it was, as far as surveys went, I thought it was pretty well-done. It didn't bias any of the questions. I thought the questions were fair and covered most of the important topics.
Thanks.
I did attend the groundbreaking, by the way.
Oh, did you? Oh, good. Good to hear.
Thanks.
When will the survey results be available?
The survey ends mid-July, I think, I think it was like July 14th. So, we time the public meetings to be able to report back sort of the cumulative feedback. So, beginning of August, that first public meeting in August, and then we'll post it all on the website as well. In terms of the permits, so I did find my data. Hang on. It's all in paragraph form, of course. Okay. So, I have been at the city for 10 years. Our data goes back to 2012, when it was more reliable. And the permits reviewed by our zoning and planning division is just a small segment of the overall permits that we issue as a department. In 2012, the permits we reviewed that whole year was 146, and in 2020, it was 372. So, it's just been sort of slowly on this arc.
372?
Yep, upwards. Wide range, again, small, big. Our big projects that you guys have all seen, so Clear Creek Terrace, Yarrow Gardens, the townhomes near the station area, those comprise, let's see, I think I had peeled that out, 45%. So, big projects, we think of maybe as the only reason, and certainly not. We've had a strong economy. We've had a strong real estate cycle for sort of an extended period of time. Yeah, just a pretty big increase. When, let's see, I did, because of COVID, we did a seven-day moving average, a new statistical data point that we're accustomed to. Our seven-day moving average of planner views that we had in 2016 was like three. And when I did this report in April, we had 45 plans in the queue at that moment in time, so a lot of work.
Safe to say there's lots of interest in Wheat Ridge and development.
Yeah, and I mean, I think you'll recall, maybe from the NRS project, you, some of you got the data report, which was sort of an interim report, and it talked about the age of our housing stock. It just sort of lends itself to projects, big and small. And I think with the desire, desirability of the community and the strong households that we continue to attract, and the strength of the economy and real estate market, we're seeing that investment in our, you know, mid-century housing stock in a way that we hadn't seen 10 years ago. So, yeah, it's impressive. So, we're happy to have the support of our council and some more staff resources to try to keep up. We have a good reputation, I think, among the community and development community of pretty quick turnarounds. We do residential permits in a two- to four-week timeframe, which is fairly quick if you've ever pulled a permit in other cities. And we don't, we didn't want to slide that, so instead of sliding that, we are adding resources.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
Is that your, conclude your report?
Those were my updates, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And...
I have a...
Oh, there were comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Leo?
I have a question. I have looked, and I can't find it. What is going in between the gas station and the rec center on Kipling?
That's where the Christian Brothers auto repair is going.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay, I have looked, trying to find out where. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, we talked about a few weeks ago, the, where is the map where I can find out what's going on when I see things? We're in the middle of doing the 22-budget cycle. That, the building of that map is in the budget, so hopefully, we'll have more self-serve resources like that in the beginning of next year. Yeah.
Most helpful, yes.
Yes, agreed.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just said one. So, I spent many years doing the in-person, and then we spent last year doing the virtual. I just assumed we'd do in-person, but I'm delightfully surprised by the hybrid, you know, between you and staff. Is this something that is now going to be the, I guess, the new normal? Where we have, like, Mr. Westberg, you know, we have him on TV?
Right.
Which is kind of, it's great. That's my question, is like, or is this just temporary because of the tail end of COVID?
My impression is the council feels the same way, that they were happy to have sort of more variety of options for the public, and specifically, to be able to participate. So, as far as we've heard, this type of format, if it keeps working technically, will probably continue for the foreseeable future. There are some communities that more typically use just the call-in feature on Zoom versus the video add-in, which is where we had, you saw some additional videography support in the beginning of the meeting to make sure it was working. So, we'll probably play with a couple of things, but we have definitely seen higher participations in the virtual format from somebody who can just be home and doing their chores, and then be able to plug in for the three minutes they get to say their piece versus being in council chambers. So, it's certainly a priority for council to retain as many options like this as possible. So, we're trying to make it work.
Well, it could also be a game changer for developers. I was watching a planning commission meeting for Jefferson County, and there was a developer that was in Chicago, and this was because of COVID, but I was just thinking, like, you know, for that developer to come all the way to Jefferson County to present a case for an hour, I mean, that's a lot of time commitment, and this is all just done virtually.
Yes. Yeah, we are sort of in form of policy. I can't remember if I went into that level of detail in the email that I sent about the meeting format, is that the presenting staff members will try to have in-person to the greatest extent possible. Obviously, if there's a extenuating circumstance or a health issue concern, we will leave them in, as we did tonight. And then, for applicants, we've asked if they're in the metro area to attend in-person. But you know how sometimes you see an applicant team come in, and they've got the landscape architect, and the civil, and sort of the team in case there's questions? So, the in-case people could join virtually, and just a better use of resources, I think, all around. Yeah. Yeah, getting there, learning all the tools.
Commissioner, send by.
Just one question, I guess, Lauren. And Mr. Sepherati kind of alluded to it, that park over there, kind of by the McDonald's at Princeton. Could you talk a little bit about that one?
Yes. Mark just hopped off, but in the short term, public parks, when you're using federal funds, are protected. So, because the Wadsworth widening includes federal funds, we can't really do anything with that park right now. You have to clear it in the same way that you would clear historical property. So, it's not ideal. It's long been not ideal, but certainly, once the Wadsworth project gets closer towards completion, our Parks Department is eager to sort of rethink what other options could be for that park, whether it stays a park, or becomes some other amenity, or there is a process by which the city can dispose of parkland. But in this period of time while we're utilizing federal funds for Wadsworth, we can't do anything quite yet.
Could they do, another option would be a potential land swap between some of the portion that the city wants, and a developer looking at that, saying, "Yeah, I'm interested."
Yeah, I think all the options would be on the table, but it just can't hap, none of those conversations can happen while we're utilizing federal funds the way that we had to clear those, that property through the process.
Commissioner Disney?
When is the contract project to start?
The bid opening is, I believe, July 1st, so we'll have a better sense of that once we select a contractor on that day, hopefully. Yeah.
July 1st is when we'll start seeing the signs and the warnings and everything going up?
July 1st is when we open bids. So, right now, the project is being advertised, and we're accepting proposals from contractors on how much it's going to cost. And then, those are all submitted in sealed envelopes, and they get opened sort of live at the same meeting at the same time for everybody to watch on July 1st. It's our biggest CIP project in a long time, so we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is on that solicitation process. And then, we would select presumably a contractor through that bid. The council would award the contract, and then they'd be responsible for being pretty specific on the scheduling and the phasing. So, hopefully, later this year, certainly, once you get into the fall and winter, you know, there's impacts there. But there's work to be done year-round on that project, essentially.
Typically, the winning bidder would include a timetable?
Yes, yeah, and a phasing plan. Yep, I believe council's scheduled to award the contract in August, based on that July 1 date. And then, you finalize an intergovernmental agreement with CDOT, and then we're ready to roll, finally.
Finally, is right.
Is that one going to have a carrot-and-stick statement?
I don't know.
You know, like incentives for getting it done early, or...
Yeah, for the contractor?
Yeah, for the contractor.
I don't know how that, I don't know how that's set up.
Or liquidated damages if they don't.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll find out.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Call for a motion to adjourn. And a second?
Second.
We all set, Tammy? We are adjourned.